Good morning. I now call the August fourteenth, twenty twenty five administrative briefing and work session of the Marion County School Board to order at nine A M. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Measuring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now read our board commitment statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. Good morning, Attorney Powers. Would you go over the rules for our public workshop?
I would be glad to. Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair and good morning, Board. I will now, this work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the rights of citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and handed to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the Speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students or their family members, by mentioning their names or identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Good morning, Ms. Martinez Young. Can you please provide the proof of publication?
Good morning, Madam Chair. The notice for the August fourteenth, twenty twenty five work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on August first, twenty twenty five. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under proof of publication.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Dr. Brewer. I guess we're ready to get started if you will kick us off with workforce housing.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. We have Jason Roberts here today to provide a presentation on upward communities. He will provide the presentation and then be available for any questions that the Board has for him. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you. Good to see you again. I wanted to come and give a brief update of our current status and some of the work that we've been doing, and so I'll try to go through the presentation. And our hopes are is to continuously, through these workshops, give weekly or every two weekly updates and our progress and what were the problems we're running into and then the solutions that we're creating and go through that. So. So, status update is on June tenth. You know, we sent leases to the Ocala Legal Team. Twenty-six, Ocala returned a very extensive red line document which we read through and which was lots of good questions. And what that also let us know is that we needed to work on the communication on our side and try to help translate real estate leases and stuff like that to a better overall platform for you, for the staff, and for the community. So we did prepare a video. We had our team put together a marketing program that was basically animated that allowed us to explain it simpler. That is also a video that you can share with anybody and about what we're offering and maybe helps bring delight, some good questions that we can provide good answers for. You know, we're excited. The school year is kicked off. It just started. And we're also very thankful that the staff was able to meet with us yesterday, knowing that they're incredibly busy and to make us a priority and give us time to go through the legal documents and give us time to go through the concerns. So we had a great meeting yesterday. Staff was very involved. We're going to, after seeing the response from the School Board, after seeing the response from the city who we've met with and even some county officials about the support, we're going to double our resources and double our efforts to applying this to making this happen as soon as possible. So we've had nothing but good feedback, good comments, and we're also just thankful to kind of get in the routine. And staff is going to give us weekly time to go through the questions and concerns and with their already overworked schedule, we're very thankful for that time. Some things have actually really, that are difficult in other areas, in different school districts in different states. A lot of the blessings have fallen in our lap. Like, we've shared, looked at locations. I'll kind of share with that here. Oh, let me go back for that. But just letting you know, there's, when we've shared with some of the property owners about the locations of what we're looking to do, and we've shared with them the School Board minutes and the meetings, some of these property owners have really come out of their shoes to accommodate us, to say, we would rather our property be sold for this purpose. So you've got a wonderful community. You've got wonderful people here that want amazing things for your school district. And it really shows. Other places, we're not blessed with that same type of opportunity. So I think we're, at this point, we're really narrowed down to continuing to go through with staff and legal, making sure that they understand the lease structure. And then we'll be getting into, very much into, the program of the location, but then meeting with staff and meeting with the people that actually would need to use this and making sure that we de-risk this for the school district and for us to make sure that we know how many staff members we're going to be helping and who would be staying at these locations. So there's an entire process that we'll be doing will be most important after we get to the lease structure. And to give you some examples of other school districts, every one that we've done that process with, we've doubled the number of interested parties compared to number of units available. So Hayes, we started off with three hundred units. We have six hundred and forty interested on the list. Lockhart, we started with a hundred and fifteen units. We have a hundred and sixty-eight on the list. So we're already outstripped the number of units that we have available. So here, it's kind of the same thing. We need to do that with you guys. And talking to staff yesterday about that, we're going to be coming around to that corner pretty quick. But we'll get organized for that. And so part of that is this video. And so I'll go to that. So let's show you some of the work that we did to help you guys send this and communicate to anybody else that needs to look at that. Okay, sure, please.
Yes. Thank you, Kevin.
How the triple net lease works with upward communities. The district leases the entire residential community from upward through a long-term triple net lease. A structure designed to feel like ownership without requiring the district to build, borrow, or carry construction risk. The district becomes the master tenant of the whole community, not individual homes, and is responsible for maintenance and repairs, insurance, and property taxes. But the district doesn't manage these directly. The district will hire upward as the property manager, handling all day-to-day operations, maintenance, leasing, and residential services. The district doesn't manage tenants. Upward consults with the district on key program decisions, like who qualifies to live there, how rent is structured, and how the housing supports staff. The district sets the intent. Upward executes. The lease payment is fixed in year one with stable predictable increases over time, so it is easy to budget. And it's designed to be revenue neutral, meaning rents collected from teachers and staff are expected to fully cover the lease payment, operating expenses and reserves, and insurance and taxes. The program is built to pay for itself predictably year after year. Think of it like leasing a car. Instead of purchasing it, you make monthly lease payments. And while you don't technically own it, you treat it like you do. You insure it, maintain it, and drive it every day. And if you decide you want to buy it later, you have that option. That's how this lease works with real control without the upfront cost. The district stays in control. Upward handles the rest. And as your needs evolve, the program can evolve with you. Together, we deliver housing that works.
So we encourage you guys to, it's a very general video, just keeping things simple. Obviously, that can you know, we can answer all questions, but I want you to feel free that you have that to share. That, I guess, formalizes our concept of helping explain what a triple net lease mostly looks like. I'll continue to move forward. So we're early in the process. We're in the diligence of the legal lease structure and also the land selection process, which the land stuff is kind of flown by really fast. And these steps can somewhat move around. Largely because it's development. So some things move faster and some things slow down, and that's, we juggle those things back and forth. You know, we've, to give you an idea on locations, we found an amazing location just south-central of town in a highly, highly desirable area. We found two or three locations. Which one would go first would obviously involve the school district's input and feedback on what would be the most important and strategic for the school district, along with staff and the feedback that we get from staff. But I would tell you that the normal process of selecting a location and getting through the entitlements of waiting nine months or longer to do those things, these properties are already fully entitled and have utilities and everything acceptable to immediately. So the only thing we pretty much gain nine to twelve months with selecting one or two of these properties, and it's very exciting. And we also have met with the city, we've also met with the county about utilities and our structure, what we're doing, and we've had nothing but good interest and support, which is also very rewarding as well. So again, kind of in the timeline of expectations, we're going to double our resource and double our efforts. I'm going to come here every two weeks with our team personally. And we're also going to be talking every week and making sure that those things are productive. I think we're really close. So I think you're going to, somewhere between this nine and eleven-one, you might see that expedited really, really, really fast. Just, it could be up as soon as nine fifteen, nine twenty that we would be to the next stage of doing surveys with staff and finding the interested parties and having that dialogue with them. But that's the idea. We'll just make sure that we get through there. As far as us, again, just to reiterate, we are still exploring some things. You are first in Florida. And so there are some things that come along with being first in Florida. We're looking at, how do we put this into a nonprofit organization? And how do we do that to where there's possibility of donating this at the end of the, at the lease to the school district without obligating the school district to take it? So there's a lot of things that we're exploring with Florida and the Florida law, but it's still all positive and everything that we've already presented today is, it's, our position has only gotten clearer and more beneficial for the school district. So with that, I'll open it up for questions and ready to answer anything you got.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. Board, I open it up to you. Anybody like to start?
I'll start by adding that that upward communities and staff and myself have discussed having a sort of a bifurcated meeting schedule where once a week, we're going to meet for a little while on specifically the legal concepts in the lease. And then also have a staff meeting. And we did have a meeting with Dr. Brewer, Ms. Usher, Ms. Boston Ellis, Mr. Blackman, Ms. Morant. And we would like to replicate those meetings once a week as well. So that way, in the meetings that they're having with the attorneys, it's a little less directed around the staff questions and the meetings they're having with staff. It less gets bogged down in specific details of Florida law. And I think that's probably a winning strategy so that we can, you know, sort of separate the time that we need for each of those items in order to try to develop what solutions need to be developed.
Okay. Thank you very much, Attorney Powers. Dr. James?
Well, and pardon my little grit in my voice today. I was actually hopeful that maybe Dr. Brewer or you could elaborate. The last time this came up, you had some pretty strong feelings about things, and Dr. Brewer did as well. So I would actually like if we could get kind of a staff take or opinion on where we are with everything because I mean, I'm looking at Dr. Campbell beyond you, but I know at least two of us are pretty passionate about moving this forward, and you had some pretty strong feelings. And staff seemed hesitant, which was something I had not heard of previously. And so is there a chance that we could just get staff to give some opinion or conversation? I mean, if I'm the only one who wants that, that's fine. We don't have to do it, but that's kind of what I'm looking to understand because there was a piece of the puzzle I was missing the last time we had this conversation.
One of the things I wanted to ask, if it's possible, if the Board could be sent the notes from the questions that were sent and the correspondence between both teams, so the Board can see what challenges we're facing and how those are being met. And I see Dr. Campbell leaning forward. Do you want to add to that, Dr. Campbell?
I, what I would add to that is where the Board came into the process and receiving the red lined lease, I believe is so much there are going to be so many steps beyond that that I don't believe, while we certainly can receive the notes on that, there's a lot of legalese that needs to get worked out. Texas law is different than Florida law. They understand all of that. So the unfortunate thing that I see, and I think I said this previously, is that we got in on the front line before some of those things had already been hashed out. And I believe Attorney Powers probably would agree, some of those things have already been hashed out quite a bit since that red line document. Certainly, we can get every update that the Board wants to have, but some of that, I mean, it's just going to be minutia. I'm ready to see what, you know, like the finished product more so, or like have a handful of questions on on the close to finished product as opposed to the hundred and five red lines or whatever the number was Attorney Powers had originally. But that's just how I feel about that.
I would say that as to the, as to the legal red lines and us trying to work things out, a lot of that is going to be stuff that is sort of attorney work product, and I think it's going to fly back and forth pretty quickly. Some of that will also be captured in meetings with staff, but I want staff, and I think Jason would agree and Dr. Brewer probably agree. I want staff to feel comfortable asking and presenting the large-scale questions they might have. And then working some of those out. Some of those can be dealt with very quickly. Some of them are larger structures which then take more more tinkering to get to. So I certainly wouldn't put the kibosh on staff through Dr. Brewer communicating directly with Board members in an email saying, here's concerns we still have, and here's questions we still have. But keeping in mind that those things, it's difficult to emphasize that there may be a set of questions which seem to be very large, which tomorrow may be not really a problem at all. And then others that are kind of on the horizon, that the need to address or solve them is more immediate. And so the difficult part is going to be trying to get it, trying to give the Board a sense of what things we need to address on what timeline. And I think that probably it's a better idea to let, or it is at least a good idea, not necessarily a better idea than anything else, but it's a good idea to let that process be a bit organic where we're dealing directly. As long as the meeting process is is achieving some functionality, then if there are issues which arise that are large scale, then, I mean, I'll tell you this, I will be the first one when I send a red line. I will also include the Board and let you know what I'm redlining, what I'm working on. Just, I fully expect, and the Board's familiar with my red lines, they tend to be insanely detailed. And so when we get a response to that red line, then you'll sort of see the process and and you'll know that a hundred and five red lines may mean sixty of them aren't anything you need to pay more than five seconds attention to, you know. So but I'll certainly allow input from Dr. Brewer and Jason to give us further indications.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Dr. Brewer?
Yes, we met yesterday. We had a very productive meeting. We went through quite a few questions and Jason was able to answer and clarify. Really, it's clarification. And so what we've asked is for this meeting that Attorney Powers to share that we're going to do page-by-page turn. And so just for them, for their team, his attorneys, to clarify, just expand on some of the language, just because we want to make sure that everything is not just verbally stated, because he did assure us yesterday verbally on quite a few things that were not written in the language. And so he assured us that his team will clarify and expand in detail. So we felt really good. I did share with Jason yesterday that the Board gave us consensus to move forward, and so we want to make this work. We don't want to present as we're being resistant. We just want to make sure that all of the red lines are answered and clarified. So we were excited about the movement yesterday. He's connecting Ms. Morant to an H R director in Texas. So we feel confident about our meeting yesterday and look forward to further discussions.
I would say that is, yeah, a large part of this has been the summer. We're back in school. Things are getting in the system. The meeting yesterday was definitely just about organization. All the questions I've read through every single red line, they're fine. There's just there just needs to be additional clarity on our part and make sure that staff fully understands what a triple net lease is and how this operates, because their questions are of concern, but they're also great questions. And we're going to do whatever it takes to make it ultra-ultra clear and elaborate to that there are no concerns, so therefore everybody can move forward in confidence. And I think it was perfect to have the dialogue, got direct staff now with communication with the Superintendent and the H R Director. It couldn't have been better timing. And so I think you're going to see substantial progress in summaries probably in the next two weeks. And I think at that point in time, if there's still major outstanding issues, that's going to be great for us to discuss, but I don't I don't expect much after just already reviewing everything. But I think, again, the dialogue, the timing, this all worked out very, very well for us and for, I believe, for the staff.
Thank you very much. Dr. Brewer, I would like to, because I don't, I don't know, and we haven't heard from everybody on the Board yet. I would like a copy of the initial questions that our staff had for upward and if there's notations on, you know, what we've found resolution on so far and what we're working on. And then I like the idea. I think you all are meeting very frequently, and Attorney Powers, I'll take guidance from you on this, but I would like an update, a summary, maybe every two weeks, if you guys are meeting every week, maybe every two weeks. So you can say, you know, maybe you list an item, but it's in progress. So it's a working document. So that the Board stays in the loop on what issues are being addressed, which issues are solved, and what issues are we having challenges with?
What may be helpful is that every two weeks when I give you your agenda review summary, that might be a good time for me to have developed a specific sort of snapshot of where we are now and then forward that to all Board members so that and the only thing I would ask is that you please consider that whatever I'm dealing with right now, it's still just a snapshot. It's not it's, it's a snapshot of a work in progress, so we don't know exactly. And, you know, if I am able to make the time for it, I can even do that weekly because we are going to be having weekly legal meetings in addition to the weekly staff meetings. So from my perspective, I'll be able to give you routine updates. I would just ask that with those routine updates, you understand that they're they're transitional.
Is the Board agreeable?
Sure. That's, I mean, it's fine. As long as it's not any, you know, time-consuming extra work that's going to be just overwhelming.
I can narrow it down. I mean, that's what I mean, is it's going to be a summary. If you have questions, call me, you know.
Perfect.
I was just, the only recommendation I was going to make is to put it in the weekly updates we get from Dr. Brewer, because ultimately, this is much bigger than the Board. And, I mean, the Board is going to be a decision-maker, obviously, in this process, but this, this work is going to impact not just our employees, but a lot of our staff. And so if there was a way that the Cliff Notes could be just sent for the weekly updates, because the weekly updates goes to what's, who's the audience for the weekly updates, Dr. Brewer?
The School Board members and the Executive Cabinet.
I just think that that would be most appropriate, in my opinion, because there are a lot of Executive Cabinet that are going to be participating in the work of this. And so if that would be plausible, even at an every-other-week status, because we already know to look in the weekly updates for weekly updates. So that would just be my recommendation personally.
Thank you for that, Dr. James. Okay. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
Sure. And I agree with what Dr. James said in the beginning stages, that there's going to be a lot of staff touchpoints that we need to get some answers clarified. But once this, and I'm saying that when this happens, not if this happens, but when this happens and it's a done deal and we're moving forward, then staff involvement completely changes. And Jason Roberts, you're welcome to speak to that if you'd like, but even to the point, the video is great. Thank you. Yeah, I love, I love Vion is the, anyway, I love creating videos like that because they really are explanatory in a way that makes it fun and engaging and all. But even the video talks about that we'll pay the insurance and the property tax and all that, but actually, not really, because you're giving us the money to do that. So it's not going to impact us fiscally the way anybody might expect. Our facilities team has nothing to do with the construction or the maintenance. And the only thing that's going to be happening when this occurs is H R will be having a conversation about how these homes are going to help us recruit more people. I mean, at least that, if you want to speak a little bit more to that. But that's, but on the front end, certainly, our team has a lot of questions, understandably, first one in Florida. We have no examples of what this looks like. There aren't actually homes built even really yet in Texas, because we actually might have them ready in Florida before Texas gets there. Sorry, I'm speaking out of turn there. But, yeah, so if you want to speak to that just a bit, what staff involvement will actually be later on in the process.
Exactly. I think that was a lot of the concerns, and rightfully so. It's a massive project. It's several hundreds of millions of dollars, you know, and for that. So we are servant-based, and every school district and every zip code is completely different and has its own flavor and its own culture and its own town. And so in order to design the homes to be extremely desirable for that community involves community involvement and us understanding you and what your staff is going to desire and want. But for the most part, like you said, facilities would normally be involved substantially because they would be managing the property and responsible for the maintenance and overseeing that. We, facilities will never even have to enter to the property because they're not going to be responsible for anything, you know. And we're not going to add, the only time that we're going to require from staff is going to be mostly with the H R Director and the Superintendent. And the real reason for that is, is tell us which staff that you're losing, and so we can save you money and retain that staff because they've been leaving because of income or because of quality of life. And then that's, in Texas, that's about costing, each person that leaves costs the school district twenty-five thousand dollars. And so when you're talking about a hundred people, it's a substantial amount of money. So we're really focused on saving the school district money by helping with the retention process. Recruitment process, as far as that goes, is you got to tell us who you want us to retain, what are the needs of the school district table, what do you need us to recruit? That involves the H R Director, but we're really a for-free, almost fully-staffed hired gun to go get those folks. But we're really a for free, almost fully staffed hired gun to go get those folks for you and to go put those people in these houses for you. And so, um, we will meet regularly, like once every six months after this process or sooner. We're, uh, we don't want to burden the staff with any additional hours. You're completely consumed with running your day job, not to add another job on top of that. And on top of that, you know, we're real estate experts and professionals. And so we need experts and professionals in this field to be operating this, running this, managing this, filling this. But this is for you. And in order for us to serve you very well, we just have to know you and we have to be able to communicate with what your needs are. And once we know those needs, we're good soldiers, we're going to go forth and march and go get that done. But as far as time, there's a little bit of time in the, in the initial phase, because we need to learn what you need. Once we learn what you need, we've got it conquered. And then it's, it's at your convenience that when you're available, we will be accommodating.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Roberts. And, and thank you for your commitment to this work. Um, because this isn't just a one-time meeting. Coming in from Texas every two weeks is going to be a commitment that you're willing to invest in Marion County. And I, I for one am grateful that it wasn't just a consideration to come here, but you're all in on making Marion County be the first opportunity in the state of Florida for you and for your, your company and your brand to come here.
Well, there are some serious things that have given us inspiration to be here. Um, I'm telling you guys, we've been all over the country. We've been invited to Nevada. The California Department of Education asked us to come to California. Uh, you know, we've been asked to go to Tennessee, which Steamboat Springs, Colorado, everywhere. You have a very good community of strong leadership. And when we see the city, the county, and we see the, the school board, and I remember I watched the minutes of the last meeting that you're like, this is how, not when. That gives me the comfort that this costs hundreds of thousands of dollars of money that we risk just to get this off the ground, that it just gives me such comfort that there's going to be a problem. And I've got a team and I've got people that are going to work with me on coming up with a solution for it. And that's what we are looking for is the people behind this. And I can't, I got to be honest with you, I wish you guys were everywhere. If you were everywhere, my, our life would be a lot easier. Um, and so I'm very thankful, just be who you are, because who you are is great comparatively across the country. And if you just stay that way, I'm going to give you everything I got. And it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be fun.
Yes, Dr. Brewer?
Nothing else. I will share our notes.
I thought there was a sign to it. You wanted to say something else?
No, I, I just appreciate his, um, the time yesterday. It was a very productive meeting and, um, yeah.
Great. Anything else from the board? Yes.
Thank you and good morning. Um, I think what you're probably seeing is that we have had a tremendous need for workforce housing, uh, for quite a few years now that, um, had yet to be met. So when you brought your concept to us, uh, for me, I'll just speak for myself, it was a tremendous relief. Because we, we know that we need it, but so far, um, there's been underserving, you know? And so what you are proposing is very quite possibly a way to move us forward as a community in a way where people won't just want to come and live and work and play here. They'll be able to do that, um, without being priced out. And that, uh, for me as a school board member that, you know, as of November, will only have a, a year left, um, is really meaningful, because when you have the right people in the right positions for the right reasons and they stay, I mean, that's, you know, that's the triple crown. So I appreciate, uh, the innovation and I think it's something as a board, we want to continue to, to foster and encourage from, from ourselves and from staff, um, even though it's a little bit scary, you know? It's like, who's going to be the business owner? I guess that's a specific question I have. Have we gotten to that point yet of who's going to be owning this, uh, little baby as it grows?
I'll hazard an answer to say that, um, we've developed, uh, sort of a, a staff group. And the staff group includes a number of parties that all have to come together for that. As I said, Ms. Morant, Ms. Boston Ellis, um, uh, Dr. Brewer, um, Mr. Blackman, um, who am I forgetting? Ms. Usher. Yeah, of course. Um, so, and, and among there, the voices are ones which are from, you know, finance perspective. There's good questions about how, um, you know, how, uh, the revenue, um, side looks from Ms. Boston Ellis. There's good questions about the HR side, which, um, Jason's given some information, um, to Ms. Morant about how, about someone else that she can contact that can give her more direct detail on, on that. Um, questions about law, I mean, of course, we're going to have those meetings with myself, Mr. Blackman, Mr. Blackman and myself. And Ms. Brown have all been working on, you know, specifically the, some of the tax questions and making sure those are properly answered as to Florida law, you know? Um, so, and Ms. Usher, of course, with facilities experience, um, she's, she's asking some of the very hard questions. You know, the ones that are perhaps unpopular, the ones that are, that are difficult, because she's got to say, hold on, I need to really, and I'm very used to that feeling with a lot of contracts. I'm used to being the one who has to say, how's this going to pass an audit? What, what does this mean for Florida statute? You know, being kind of the, the oppositional one. So all of us have to do that. And, um, so I don't think we have a solitary business owner. I think we have something much better.
Great. And that matches, you know, the innovation that this project appears to require. Um, it's, it sounds to me like it's going to be business owners, you know, plural, uh, at, at least for a while. And then at some point, when some, when, when an item comes before the, the school board to vote on, it'll be interesting to see, you know, who, who's going to bring it. And, and it may depend, depending on, um, what's, where we are in the process at the time, it'll, that will be the quote unquote business owner. So, you know, when, when you're in a structure that's sort of always been the way it's been, uh, it's, it's a foundational shift.
And at any snapshot in time, um, there are likely to be, um, difficulties that Jason is working on and the Upward Communities is working on, um, difficulties that I'm working on with their attorneys, difficulties that Ms. Usher is working on with facilities or finance, just, and when I say difficulties, I mean challenges in answering questions, because, you know, every challenge presents an opportunity. So those are all things that at any given time, we're going to have individual aspects that I have more of a concern about this than someone else. And someone else may have more of a concern about that aspect than I do. And I think it, it's a very important, and, and I've not seen any, not seen any reason that anyone, um, on the team, including, um, our partners at Upward have in any way sort of negated anyone else's feelings and said like, no, you're just being difficult or whatever. It's, it's a matter of, you know, trying to get the right answers.
Right. And if this is going to work and move forward quickly, then it's going to continue to take that type of collaboration. My, my final question is on, um, slide five, and it is, um, specific to, uh, the, the land that is being identified. And it says on slide five, slide five, to be properly, be properly zoned for residential housing. Is the properties that you're looking at, are they already zoned for residential?
Yeah. It's, um, it's one of the blessings that we have as a larger scale solution. When we're able to bring in 300 to 500 homes, when a, most of these master planned communities are subject to delaying infrastructure, because they need to sell 25 houses per quarter, where when we come in and we're going to build 300 or 500 houses immediately, it allows, we have to have the red light installed. We have to have the turning lane installed. So these properties are teed up from a residential standpoint, have already entitled with water and sewer connections already established to them. So that makes them, like I said, nine to 12 months lightning speed faster. And then when we're able to present our product for this purpose, which our product's amazing and better than I think some of those designs that are, the properties are already entitled for, um, the county, the city, the folks are, are in love with it, because we're able to provide an expedited infrastructure solution. We just have a different capital model of moving quicker. So the other, that's one of the things I just can't not understate as a real estate investor developer. Uh, you have some amazing locations with amazing people that are, uh, willing to facilitate this process extremely fast. I mean, like I said, she mentioned possibly before some of my Texas assets, you just have some blessings that are right here on your front doorstep. So I'm like, I'm coming every two weeks. We're going to get to this lease right away, because I mean, the door, as soon as I pay attention to that property, then now there's going to be 20 other people that are going to pay attention to it and it may not be on the market longer. So we've been able to work something out on one location. There's another location that's amazing as well, but that landowner is not as willing to explore. Uh, so we have to put up some serious capital to obtain that property off the market. And we won't do that yet until we get all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed. But yes.
Got it. Got it. So the properties don't have to be rezoned. They won't have to go through a rezon-
No, I, I think, I got to learn some things on the, the replating, but because we're not individually plating all the individual houses, this is one larger plat. I think it's, it's actually a lessening of density. Some of these properties have multifamily proposed on them for a number of units. And so when we go to the lesser demographic, all of a sudden, I think a lot of things are not required and we're able to move faster. But, uh, I would caution, I'm asterisk still learning some things about Florida, so I'll find out.
And as much as I may be a glutton for punishment here, I've realized that we've, in, in most of our dealings with, uh, county and city, it is difficult to get to, but it is useful to have an interlocal agreement which governs those factors. So, um, given interest by the city, given some interest by the county, um, this may be something that I do not want to get bogged down in weeds of detail. However, it may be something that communicates the spirit of trying to work together in such a way that benefits the county, the city and the school, uh, the school board to, um, propose a, um, to propose an interlocal agreement specific to these purposes. Um, and there's no requirement for that. However, it would be a good sort of structure within which to ensure that everybody's on board and that we don't run into questions six months or a year from now that somebody, you know, believes that something should be done differently. So.
Dr. James?
Well, it was a board member for a while.
And our next, uh, joint meeting for elected officials, is that in October?
I think, I think that's been moved to February.
Oh, okay.
We're wait, I'm waiting on a date, um, but they reached out to me to move it to February and I have not received a day back.
Okay. Um, because it sounds to me like quite a viable topic as an agenda item that, uh, would not, could not just be an email. You know, um, I'm looking forward to having deeper participation by all of the entities and give us really meaty, weighty things to talk about that affect all three or four, considering the municipalities. Can't talk today.
Sure. Yes. So, understanding that the work of the interlocal agreement can be a heavy lift at times, I believe that, I believe that Jason is accurate and based on my understanding of development. And I also think that if, if it's working, let's not add a cog to the wheel. So if we are going into already approved developments and we are just going to put our neighborhood there instead of the neighborhood that was designed and it's simply about updating the way the plan looks and we are actually putting less density in, to me, we do not need any more opportunity to create meeting after meeting after meeting to figure out how to agree about how to hold hands, because it is going to be heavy lift and heavy work. And my, my expectation is that once we figure this out, let's go. Especially if we're going, it would be one thing if we were just finding 40 acres and we had all this work to do. Because then we would definitely need to figure out how to all agree. But if we are identifying, and I say we by us being a collective group, are already identifying pre-land use change done, zoning done, density done, and all of that has already been done, there is no reason to go above and beyond to get approvals that we don't need, because we're already going to have the approvals, because the work has already been done. And to me, that speaks to the work that you all are going to do, because let's identify, let's identify parcels that are already ready to rock and roll. Because then we don't have to do a land use change. And then the community doesn't have to have an uproar, because we're adding another neighborhood, right? This neighborhood is already approved. It was, it's actually lowering the density. And we don't have to go, because the community will see, oh, the county's approving another neighborhood. And that will become a problem, even though it won't matter that all the people already live here anyways. None of that will matter, right? And so I, I really think if we can stay the course and get approvals very easily, then we don't need to get into the nitty gritty of another interlocal if it's going to at all cog the wheel. That's just my take on it.
One thing I would add is-
That's perfectly valid. I, I, I think that my, my, my concern came from there are potential individual issues that it'd be easier to put a short and simple interlocal agreement in there. Now, I understand that that is often extremely difficult.
Yeah.
But just wanted to let you know, that's an idea that I'm kicking around.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Brewer?
And hence my rather deep questions about the, the zoning.
Yeah.
Because what I am visualizing at the next joint meeting of elected officials, that this can be, uh, an innovative project that touches all of us, that we can finally celebrate something together and keep it moving.
Yes.
That's where I am with this.
Okay. I think you had something to say.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm in the solutions business, right? So if you'll let us, we have resources. We're going to come up with some solutions for some of these problems. And I think what we are finding right now is you're right. Uh, this problem has been existing for a while and it's not just for you, it's pretty much for all the central staff. And, uh, we, that works. And so I think you're going to find a lot of reasons and commonality to work with each other through this process that are going to bring some people together that might've had some differences before. And we brought up a point about impact fees. You know, typically we ask to lower all costs as much as we can. We realize and were brought to our attention that impact fees were going to be an issue, uh, politically because of other people asking for those to be waived. So we, we agreed, we're going to pay the impact fees. So some people think that that's a showstopper. Um, again, I'm in the solutions business. If that, we got to pay impact fees, then I'll just, that means we lose one tree per house or something. We'll figure it out, you know? Or, so just, we are going to, uh, to get to this, I definitely am very aware of, there's a lot of social ideas of everybody working to, well, together in the sandbox. But my priority first, because you've been the first to step up, is to take care of your needs. And then if I can help other people along the way, we're absolutely going to do that.
Bone trees can be donated.
We can buy smaller ones.
That, that's not my deal, Brewer. We have some great nurseries around. Um, for me and sadly, you know, uh, for you guys, it, it, we waited a long time to re, task to reinstate impact fees, because our economy here was in a shambles, you know, for a very long time. So when we got to the point where we're like, okay, you know, we really need to do this, I don't think anyone sitting up here ever expected that it was going to take two years to get that done. I guess, you know, personally I was more expecting, well, we can, we know you guys waited as long as you could, so we're going to help you expedite this. Well, that is exactly what didn't happen. So we are where we are with that, but, um, I wish that we were in a position to be able to, and maybe that's a board decision, but to be able to waive impact fees. But, you know, we just, we put them off for so long, for a lot of good reasons. You know, we kind of are where we are with that.
Not a problem. We'll do it.
All right, Dr. Campbell?
Sure. Just kind of to wrap this up, because I, I know you probably weren't planning to be with us for a full hour this morning. But, uh, and, and it's not just our impact fees. I mean, the county is putting in their fire and emergency services and transportation. And so there's, there's other impact fees out there that I'm grateful that you're saying, okay, what's the hurdle? We're, we're going, we're going to jump over that hurdle with you. Let, let's just figure it out and, and move on. Uh, so, and I'm also grateful that this board hasn't had to call a technical working group meeting with the, you know, for the interlocal agreement or any of that to try and get, because you're already boots on the ground, having the conversations with the city, having the conversations with the county. And so all of those potential hurdles that we might have seen, you're going to head them off before they even come, before the hurdle's even installed. And so, uh, just again, th- this is being done the right way and, and I'm, I'm grateful for how the process is starting to work and just can't wait to get over the finish line. So.
It only gets more fun. Um, there's going to be some challenges. There's going to be some difficulties. But, you know, it's, this is the hardest part, is just believing. And once you believe, then the rest of it- And once you believe, then the rest of it falls into place. And once you believe that somebody is here truly dedicating their money and their resources to provide a solution, the, the rest falls into place.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Is there any public comment? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you spending the morning with us and yesterday too with our staff.
I look forward to seeing you again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, Dr. Brewer, we're ready to talk about the tentative budget.
Yes, we are. And we have Mrs. Boston Ellis. She's here, she's going to share a little information in response to last meeting. She's going to clarify some of the safe schools conversations, discussion points, and then she's going to introduce Kayla Johnson and she will do the remainder of the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Conrad, board members, and interim superintendent Dr. Brewer. Thank you for the lead in. And as Dr. Brewer stated, I wanted to go over the, the questions you had about safe schools first. So you did receive a revised slide. It's slide number 89 behind tab three. And just to, to let you know, the total SRO cost budgeted for 2526 The amount that is in, or budgeted in the referendum fund is $3,315,561. The remaining $2,40,691 is in the general fund. So we needed to clarify that and correct that. It's just the way the, the SROs are grouped. So that was an error on our part. This is our last presentation, but if we need to bring back any answers to questions, we will be able to do that on the 21st. It's already set up. But this is the last presentation. And it will include the remaining funds, debt service, capital projects, our special revenue fund, food service, special revenue fund other, which are all of our grants, and then the health and property casualty self-fund. So as Dr. Brewer stated, I'll bring up Ms. Kayla Johnson. She is the director of budgeting and I know all of you know her and she's been doing a fabulous job and I'm just proud to see how she has grown in, in this area. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Conrad, board members, interim superintendent Dr. Brewer. Today I'm here to talk about the tentative budget for the capital projects fund, debt service, special revenue food service, special revenue other, which is the grants, and the internal service fund, which is where we pay all our self-insurance out of. On slide three, we'll look at the millage levies once again. Capital projects is by statute able to levy 1.5 mills specifically for capital projects. As we seen last week, the taxable value is at $42.9 billion. That's an increase of about 11% over last year. Capital is allowed to levy 1.5 mil. That is set by the legislature. That has not changed over last year. We are estimating $61.8 million in revenue generated from the 1.5 mil. That is an increase of $6 million over last year. And that is due to the increase in property values. We did not increase the millage rates. The next slide will show you a history of the capital millage rates. I've said before, these are set by the legislature. So they have decreased historically. In 2007, 2008, we were able to levy a full two mills. In 2008, 2009, that funding was reduced to 1.75 mills. And then 2009, 2010, it was reduced again to 1.5 mills and that's where it stayed for the last 16 years. Slide five shows you how much money we've lost by this change in the statute, the reduction of the two mills down to 1.5. And as you know, we've had an increase in capital costs over the years and then decrease in funding up until we've done things like sales tax and the impact fees in recent, the last couple of years. Next, we're going to look at the capital projects fund in detail. So capital projects fund were estimated to receive $371 million. 69% of that is the beginning fund balance. And what that is, is a majority of it is the leftover money from the certificates of participation that we received in 2024. So that's sitting in fund balance and then we re-spend it in the next years. After that, 16%, the 61.8 million comes from the 1.5 mil capital levy. We are also so grateful for our community approving the sales tax, which is estimated to generate about $39.6 million for the capital projects fund. We also are estimating about $9 million in impact fees. There's also other small funding sources such as capital outlay and debt service. Pico funds for charter schools, that's strictly a pass-through. You guys do have a handout that I gave you that will show you exactly what funds in the capital projects are passed through to the charter schools. We also received some small grants in the capital projects fund. At tentative budget time, we had budgeted $205 million in expenditures. I know this looks like a huge gap between the revenue and expenditures, but that is because we have about $169 million in POs that had to remain open for construction that was in progress when we closed the tentative budget. So once we receive all the bills on those POs, we will then roll all of that over into the 2526 year. So that budgeted expenditure number will go up. About 68% is new construction and this is because we are building the new schools. Prior to the, when we got the bonds in 2024, a majority of our expenditures were based on remodeling and renovation to try to update some of our schools. You'll see that capital projects also pays for a lot of other things besides just new construction and remodeling. They pay for maintenance on the schools, the property insurance, the debt service, buses, we have a transfer to charter school, and they also pay for equipment. This slide will show you all the different funding sources that comes into the capital projects fund. And even within the capital projects fund, there is restrictions around each of those pots of money. So if we look at CONDS, those projects must be survey recommended and approved by the state. The local property taxes is, has to be survey recommended and has to follow the statutes. If we look at impact fees, that is, has to follow the ordinance that was passed and is for growth-related construction. Other capital projects are grants specifically, which each have their own specific requirements around them on what we can use them for. And then the certificates of participation are based on the bonds that we issued. This is always a slide we like to keep in here because we have not received Pico dollars in quite some time. So Pico maintenance funds, we have not received funding since 2018, 19. And then new construction, we actually haven't received since 2008, 2009. So this was a funding stream prior for capital projects that we no longer have and haven't had for a while. We're going to move on to impact fees. We know we have reinstated impact fees, but first we'll look at the historical structure and then we'll look at the current impact fees that were approved in 2024. So if you look at the schedule here, this was our prior collection schedule for impact fees, a pretty simple streamlined schedule here. In 2011, the board decided to suspend the impact fees at that time due to the economic conditions. And you guys are all aware because you sat on the board when we reinstated the impact fees in 2024. Impact fees are restricted to growth-related capital improvements and it is based on whatever is written in the ordinance. I do think there were some changes when we wrote the ordinance for 2024. The historical impact fees, we collected about $12 million. We are still receiving a small amount of interest on some leftover funds that have been sitting there for a while. If you look, there is listed every, all the projects that we used the impact fees on, sorry, including many land purchases and several wing additions. So I'll move on to the new impact fees and these were reinstated back in March of 2024 with effective date of July 1, 2024. As of tentative budget, we had collected about $6.6 million in impact fees. There was a fourth quarter accrual that would bring up total collections to $11.6 million. Our 2526 estimate for impact fees is about $9 million. This money right now is used to pay back the debt service for the new construction, the COPS 2024. I know this is, it looks like a conservative number. I believe in 2425, our estimate from the growth department was about $15 million. However, when we started seeing collections from 2425, we did realize we weren't quite going to hit that number and had to readjust then. We have a consultant looking at the permits that have been issued to try to help give us a better idea of what the actual number for impact fees will be. And once they have done their full analysis, we will be updating the budget.
Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Kayla. I, I just want to, I don't want to say I want to correct something that you said, but I want to redirect something that you said because we understand that the impact fee calculation here, roughly $9 million, we are using that to offset our debt service. However, what that means is we understand how the impact fees are being collected and the regions they're being collected in. And so specific projects in those areas are being funded with essentially the same $9 million all around. It's just, this is replacing that money. I, I don't, I don't want the misconception that we are automatically using the impact fees just to pay the debt because that's not how the agreement is written. And so I don't want that to be confusing out there to folks. If we're collecting a significant amount of impact fees in Northwest Marion County, it all has to be spent in Northwest Marion County. And currently, we don't have part of the $330 million loan funding projects in Northwest Marion County. So we just have redirected money to those specific areas. I, I just, you, you said we're using it. I, I know, I know how it, how we're doing it. I just don't want that misconception to be out there. Certainly don't want somebody picking it up on social media or in a print publication to say that we're doing that because we're completely following how the agreement was written.
Yes, so I will add to that. We do, for, we do track what educational benefit district the revenue is coming in for. I did not bring that detail today, but if that is something that interests you guys, we can bring that back. And like you said, it can only be used for areas where there is growth. So everything collected in a specific educational benefit district has to be spent in that educational benefit district.
Thank you. I, I believe this statement had just been made that we're using all this money to pay off the debt service, which I understand that just means that the 1.5 mil capital that we're also coming in, those dollars are being spent and, and we're not using those, you know, to pay off the debt. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that clarification occurred. Thank you. I think Dr. James has.
All right, I think last year I made the same statement because the clarification is important. My other point of clarification though is impact fees have to be used on growth-related building. And so for instance, the work we're doing at East Marion Elementary, which is primarily being funded by sales tax. But if there was new construction in the Northwest quadrant of Marion County, which we all know there's, it's not like they're popping up a bunch of neighborhoods, but their people are building houses. Would it be fit for the definition of our impact fees to be able to use that, those funds to support the walls, doors, and security efforts at East Marion Elementary as an example?
I, I would say we'd have to go back to the ordinance, but.
And that's, and that's my question. So, because otherwise, we shouldn't be expending every dollar of the impact fees because there are quadrants of Marion County where we are not addressing growth. Unless the work we're doing, for instance, at East Marion, can be defined as addressing growth. And if there is a way to define that, then I'm completely on board. However, if it cannot, when we went through all of the work that's being done, specifically addressing sales tax, we, I, I brought up the fact that like literally none of it is being spent in District Five essentially as the plan was presented. And so my, my concern is that we will collect impact fees, but then other than maybe a new playground, which can we define a new playground as addressing growth? I'm wondering how we are going to define spending money on growth in the capital department in areas... Do you see where I'm going?
Portables in Ocala Springs. That would be an example in District Five.
We haven't added new portables. They've been sitting there for 20 years. So, I mean-
If we were to change those out and we were moving those and have an Elise portable go, that, that's how that, yeah, Ms. Usher is raising her hand.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Usher-
Sorry, Ms. Usher.
But I'm just, to the point of what, to the point of what Dr. Campbell shared and to extend my greatest, we should have money left over if we are not doing impact fee-defined construction in a quadrant.
Yes.
But I don't think we have money left over. I mean, the way it was just described, and last year's the same way, that there wasn't money left over. And so I guess my question to Ms. Usher or someone, if it can't be answered today, it can be answered at another time, is the work we're doing for security, walls, doors, et cetera, fit within the ordinance of the impact fee?
Ms. Usher, thank you for coming forward. Thank you. The impact fee can only be used for growth. For example, we have a K8 in the plan. We have different wings. Those we can use impact fee. For safety and security or for doors or modernization, we cannot use impact fee. It is just for student growth-related projects. However, that doesn't mean we won't do those projects in the Northwest because we have the local capital improvement fund, which is 1.5 millage, and we do have sales tax. So we can focus the impact fee money beside paying debt where we need it for growth and use the other funding sources for those projects such as doors and renovations.
My point is, there should be money left over at the end of every fiscal year in the impact fee bucket if we are not doing a project in the quadrant in which it was collected. That is my point. So if we are not doing, to date, since we have started impact fees, I'm not aware of any growth-related anything north of like, I don't know, 40. And so in probably two of the quadrants, at least, I don't have the map in my head, but I'm-
So what we can do, Dr. James, if you would like, is we could get you the revenue breakdown that is based on the educational benefit districts and then what projects are in each of those areas that are growth-related so that you, we can give you guys more of a visual of what is going on with the impact fees.
And then whatever money is left over because, and so I just really, and I said this last year, Dr. Campbell- this last year, Dr. Campbell at the discussion today, we have to stop saying what we said, because the money, there should be money left over, and I don't want anyone to think there is not money left over. Internally, we know, we're taking this money, we're doing this, and then there's other money, and it's all great, but there has to be money left over, because I just find it hard to believe that we've spent it all. I mean, maybe we have, but, so that, that's, that is, sorry to belabor the point, but that is really, for me, what we need to make sure that we are all on the same page about, because there are areas of our district where we are not collecting a lot, but we're also not doing a lot related to growth.
Thank you, Dr. James. Anything further? Just, just one final point on that. I, I, I would agree, and I believe the board would all appreciate, especially since you just said fourth quarter numbers. When you get those fourth quarter numbers, then just give us our five districts and say how much was collected in each of our districts. We'll then know what those monies were spent on in our districts, or to Dr. James's point, District 5 doesn't have growth-related things that are occurring. And so whatever was collected in impact fees over this past year kind of sits in a reserve bucket. But just, we, we don't see that here. I know that that's how it's being done, it's just, it, it's not clear yet.
Yes, and like I said, we'll bring something back to you guys to clarify, or send it out in an email following the presentation, so that you guys, and if you have additional questions, you of course can reach out to us.
Perfect, thank you.
So is there any other questions on impact fees?
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're good to go.
So we'll move on to the sales surtax, and we'll start with the historical...
Trying to get a statute number, and I'm, give me, Westlaw's giving me different information, so...
Keep going? Okay.
Oh, wait, nope.
Yeah.
Siri has a mind of her own today.
Yeah.
Think we're good? All right, Ms. Johnson, I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the sales surtax, we did leave this separate, because you guys know we had a a surtax that expired in 2009. So we did leave this as the 2009 tax, and then we have a separate slide for the new tax. Total collections from the 2004, I'm sorry, the 2005-2009 sales tax was $111.7 million. And the cost at that time for the sales tax, we did the Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks, Liberty Middle School, Marion Oaks Elementary School, Legacy Elementary School. I believe they looked at the middle school DD and elementary W, and I don't believe they were completed at that time. The new sales surtax was voted November 5, 2024, with an effective date of January 2025. The sales surtax expires in 2034. For '25-26, we're estimating about $40 million in revenue, and based, this was based on July 1, so the, the priority at that time was to do the replacement elementary school for the Bellevue Elementary and Bellevue Santos Elementary School. And that is what is currently in the '25-26 budget. We also are required to distribute a portion of this to the charter schools at $860,000. The next two sl, ooh, I'm sorry. The next two slides are listed, that all the capital prod, oh? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. So we have five charter schools in Marion County?
Yes.
Is it distributed based on their enrollment?
Yes, so it's based on FTE.
Okay. So, I mean, how many FTE do we have between all five charter schools? There's not that, I mean, there's not that many. Thousand, 1,200?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but... Ben says 1,000, so I'll go with what Ben says.
So $8,600 extra per student they're getting in sales tax?
Yes. And that's, that is the formula that we are required to distribute.
Well, of course, I mean, I know, I know we're not just giving it away, but, I mean, $860,000, $8,600 a kid is a lot of money, especially for some of those more small schools, which, it's wonderful, and they're our students, they're Marion County students, and so, what is the accountability measure for us ensuring that they, and maybe this is a Mr. Ayers' question, but how are we ensuring that they are spending the money, they're receiving the way that we have to spend the money?
I would also defer to Mr. Ayers. I know for the referendum, which is allocated similar as the, actually, the exact same formula as the sales tax, they are required to submit a report to us, but it's an agreed between us for them to submit the report. And from what I've heard from other school districts is, we can't really require them to provide us anything.
Ayer, we, we are required, they are required to provide us documentation of their FTEs. What we don't get to do is audit how they're spending it.
But it has to be spent for capital. Sales tax, sales tax has to be spent on capital. What, what they buy in the capital bucket, okay, fine, but it has to be spent on capital. So I'm just asking, where is the accountability measure to ensure that they're spending it on capital?
They have to get their own audit, so the charter schools are required to have an auditor come in every year, just like the school district is, and we do receive their audit reports. And that would be the accountability measure they're taking.
Okay, I, sorry, I was trying to, I just about crashed out when you just told me all this. I was trying to figure out how many students were at, INA colon is the largest...
1231, I just didn't...
Okay. I was trying to see which charter was the largest, which I think is INA colon, right?
It is, that's correct.
And how many students do they have? It's gonna be on the elementary list, that's why I can't find it.
198 plus...
400-ish? Yeah. I mean, that's a lot of money.
It's 580, 584 is what, or 580-something is your number that they're looking at?
Yeah, that's $5 million for a brand-new facility to get. I'm just wondering how they're spending it. So this board member wants to know, and if there's no legal way, then I'll figure out another way to tackle this, but I'm wanting to know how a brand-new school is spending $5 million on capital, because...
But capital can be transportation, can be safety.
They don't transport. They all have fences and buzz doors.
They have, they have SROs, they're gonna have, I, I understand.
Not $5 million in SROs. So I'm just wondering, because an SRO costs, at the top end, $150,000 if they're paying all in. So $5 million is just a significant amount of money, and I want to ensure for our taxpayers that if we are passing the money through to another entity, that it is being used the same way, because we certainly would figure out how to use it. And so that is, that is just the, the, the pressure point I have.
Sure, maintenance, I mean, the building will eventually get old, they'll need a new roof, they'll need, I mean, so all of that, but I understand, $5 million on a brand-new building is...
But you don't get to roll over the money, right?
Sales tax does.
So 10 years? No...
But it could be held in fund...
Yeah, I mean, we, we have been spending, you can see here on our sales tax, for the, the first one we had in the 2004, we were still spending money of it in 2024.
But do they have to spend it, any of it, or can they save all of it?
Yeah, they can save it. There's nothing that says they have to spend it at a certain point in time. I just wanna clarify, you, you're saying $5 million for INA, and I, the total for all the charter schools for the sales surtax is six, 860,000. So I, I...
860...
For the whole year.
For the whole year.
Yeah.
Which roughly half would be INA colon.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know, maybe I did a 10-year number or something, I don't know how I got there.
Maybe over the 10...
Still, I, I would like to know and understand how they are, how they're spending it, because certainly we will maximize how we spend it if it's here, and so I wanna make sure that they're spending it on capital for their needs. Some of the schools are much older, McIntosh is an example, doesn't have a lot of kids, but McIntosh could probably spend theirs very easily. But a brand-new school certainly has maintenance costs, but, you know, it'd be interesting to know.
We can speak in more detail to Mr. Ayers, but I will tell you that Mr. Ayers and I did a specific deep dive on some of this, because we were recently trying to negotiate past shortfalls in referendum allocations with them and sales tax allocations. So one of the things that was surprising to learn at that time was that the accountability side of it is, the legislature has specifically denied us that, that we don't get to require reports and things that, that's between them and Department of Education, federal, there's the, the state legislature. What we are required to get is the reports of how many students they have backed up, then Ms. Boston Ellis's department carefully looks at the FTE numbers and weighs what their estimations are along with ours, in order to come up with a total, and, and what the estimate is there, that they, that they get. How they're using the funds once we turn the funds over, that's beyond our view.
Yes, and I...
It may not be beyond public view largely.
That, and that's, I'm more, I'm more speaking from the public view. The public, the taxpayers who voted for this, having a clear understanding, and also, I, the reason I crashed out so hard was because I had an extra zero in there. So it's 860 per kid, not 8,600 per kid. So I apologize for taking it to the extreme there, because I was like, that is so much money, what? Yeah, it's, I had an extra zero in there. But I think from an accountability perspective, for, for our taxpayers who voted for this, for all of us and for all of our students, making sure that everyone is as accountable as we are, to ensure that that money is being spent to, for the things that we said it was gonna be spent for. That's all I'll say on that.
Reese is nodding.
Yeah.
I'll just say, can I just say that the, the larger question would be, what are their accountability parameters, and, and who are they reporting to? And then that way, if you're a member of the public that's interested, that should be a public record, and it should be able to be available, those, those auditing reports, just like ours, they're on the website, you know? It's a great question, because once, once that money passes through us, it's kinda like a toilet, you know? It's gone, and it's out of our jurisdiction. And it's interesting, and, because since it's out of our jurisdiction anyway, why does it have to come through us in the first place? You know, to me, it would be a lot easier to track if it went directly to the entities that are getting it. I guess another legislative priority, maybe, on that.
I just, I just said that to Ms. Thrower, I'm like, ooh, we have something to add to our discussions, because it is such a challenge.
I will tell you, I had the same thoughts on the funds, and how we were gonna make sure they were spent according to the referendum and the sales tax, so, but, like I said, it is kind of out of our purview to request the information. We do depend on the independent auditors' report to make sure that they're spending the money according to both the sales tax language and the referendum ballot language. And really their FES and all, all the money they receive. Okay, I know these were gonna be the two fun slides, was gonna be impact fees and sales tax. The next two slides are a list of all the capital projects that are budgeted as of tentative budget, and I just wanna remind you guys that when we did this five-year plan at tentative budget, it was July 1st. So the projects that are listed here as funded and in the tentative budget, I know probably have already been adjusted by the facilities department. This is just what had to be in there for tentative budget. When you guys get the actual five-year work program that comes, I believe, in October now, it will have the full funded projects. And I'll just give you guys a few minutes to look through this list, because it's quite extensive, and if you have any questions on it.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't necessarily have a question on this, and I know that the five-year work program is coming to us in October, so I'm not gonna belabor a point, I'm just gonna make a statement. Because we sort of have had these conversations somewhat over the summer before we got 2025, 2026 projected enrollment numbers, we're right now looking at a combined Bellevue Elementary and Bellevue Santos at, if we were to build it today, 1,400 students. And that's not with the projected growth upcoming in the Bellevue community. Just making a statement, not belaboring it today. I appreciate that we're wanting to combine those schools, but I have significant concerns about just how large we want an elementary school to be. So, just, I'm not belaboring that, we'll talk about that later. That's just a philosophical statement I wanted to make, since we started seeing attendance numbers yesterday.
And Chair, one thing I'll say unrelated to that, because I think we'll get into that for sure, and rezoning and other things are gonna have to come into play again, which is unfortunate for that part of our community, but... So one of the things that, and I only rely, and I'm not gonna go into the nitty-gritty on this, Ms. Usher and I have been working on something on the North End, but when we see this, and this has nothing to do with you, Kayla, either, when we see this, this is a very high-level perspective of the work we're doing in the district. And then as a board member, we hear a narrative about it, typically in the five-year work plan presentation, and then that narrative is still rather high-level, and then there is, and I'll take ownership of an assumption for then what comes next, and what is going to happen. For instance, there's a district-wide athletic improvements, $2 million. Well, Mr. Tucker's come before us, he's talked about his plan, this says that. And so, that has happened many years past, and I've been on the board for three years now, and that happens every year. And then what comes to fruition oftentimes, historically, has not looked exactly, in exactly as loose term. Some of them have looked very not the same than what we thought we were receiving. Auditorium lighting and sound is an example of a project, which Ms. Usher and I are problem-solving how to address the North End and what happened up there. But I wish there was a way that as the five-year work plan is brought to the board, there could be just a little bit more detail on some of these district-wide projects, because the heartburn of District 5 is that we are left out always, and the auditorium project is a prime example of that. I'm grateful that we're gonna problem-solve it, but I really would love for there to be, you know how you kinda do the line item, and then there's some dropdowns, just a way to really put on paper what our plan is and what we're doing, so that as a board member, I can ensure that I truly know we're representing what district-wide means, and not, and the money allocated for each project. Because allocating 850,000 for one project and 100 for another is not an equitable allocation, in my opinion. And so, I wanna make sure that I, as a board member, am able to know what I'm voting on. So that's more for a five-year work plan conversation, but I would appreciate that in the future, so that I can be best informed.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Yes.
Anything else from the board?
Okay.
I think we're ready, Ms. Johnson.
So if you guys don't have any questions on that exhaustive list, we can move on to debt service, and the next few should be less interesting. So debt service comes straight off our debt schedule, so it's a pretty simple fund. 99% of it comes from transfers and from capital projects fund. We get a small amount of interest revenue, $6,000 is the estimate for '25-26, and then we get about $223,000 from the racing commission fund for paramutual funds. The expenditures are 25.9 million, 59% is interest, 10.5 million is principal, and then we do pay a small amount to the bank for an annual fee of $8,000. We'll go into detail on the revenue. It's pretty, pretty simple, the racing commission fund, $223,000, this is state funds, the $6,000 in investment funds, and then the rest is a transfer from capital and pro, capital improvement fund, and that's the 1.5 mils and the impact fees that we were talking about. This next slide will list the expenditures by object code, but then also the type of loan they're repaying. So we have $23.9 million in certificates of participation, $198,000 for the revenue bond, and then the lease purchase agreement for the buses is 1.8 million for the '25-26 year. This will list our total outstanding debt. The revenue bond will be paid off in December of 2031. The certificates of participation Series 2015B will be paid off in June of 2027. The 2024 certificates of participation won't be paid off until June of 2044. And then the lease purchase for the 150 school buses will be paid off in March of 2029. So Florida statute allows us to use up to 75% of our capital outlay mills for debt payments. We're currently using 41.65%, so... So we're under what is allowed by law. Our credit ratings were affirmed, they have not changed since last year. Um, I believe we stated last year that this does help us get better interest rates when we go out for those certificates of participation or other bonds. That's the end of debt, if nobody has any questions there.
I just have a quick statement. Um, going back a few slides indicating, you know, we're looking at fifteen million dollars in interest for this year. Um, I think highlights of Ms. Usher, and I've talked about this too, but highlights why this board decided we did not want to take out any more loans for building with the sales tax funds. I just think we're already spending so much money on interest and it is not the most financially responsible thing to do to take out more loans to pay more interest and basically waste away those sales tax dollars. And we're just going to build as we go and be patient about it. Um, and obviously, maybe the board will have further discussion about, you know, what our next steps are and how we'll fund them in the future. But I think right now, we all said no more borrowing because the taxpayers deserve for all of that sales tax money to be spent on things that are going to be right here in the community and not interest. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Okay, so we'll move on to food service. And this is the fund where all of the items for Ms. Belcher's food service department are housed. Um, most of their revenue comes from the federal government USDA grant or reimbursement, about ninety-five percent of it for fifty point three million dollars. They're estimating total expenditures about sixty point two million dollars. Food service does have, um, fund balance funds that are, they are utilizing to do some extra projects. And the food service fund, um, their largest expense is food. So you'll see materials and supplies is at forty-seven percent. This is different than a lot of the other funds. You'll see where salaries and benefits is the largest cost. Um, salary and benefits for food service is still a, a good chunk at thirty-three point five percent. There is a handout for you guys that Ms. Belcher wrote that gives you a food service update as well as the reimbursement rates from, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year and the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Slide twenty-six will show you the, um, income statement for the food service fund. They do fluctuate between operating at a deficit and profit. And, um, this year, we're estimating they'll have about three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue. We'll look at the revenue in some more detail. Like I said before, their largest funding source is USDA, um, fifty point three million dollars in federal revenue. They're estimating a small increase in reimbursement for both the school lunch reimbursement and school breakfast reimbursement. And as you can see on the reimbursement rates, they have a small increase per meal served and that does amount to quite a bit more revenue for them. There was not any significant changes on the state revenue. And then the local, um, stayed pretty similar to last year as well.
Chair? Do we have a way to quantify the amount of money we're saving by using our farm-to-school, uh, patterns? Um, I was at North Mary Middle on the first day of school and Mr. Edwards showed me the graph with, um, all of the schools and how much food they donated. And he just trumped them all. He did such a wonderful job at North Mary Middle. But is there a way for us to, um, highlight how much money we're saving by using that program? Um, because he said they had so much from his program, they actually had to send it to other schools, which is amazing. Um, but I think it would be a good way for potentially people who want to donate to our program and, and continue to support the work of our farm-to-school program to understand how much money we're saving as a district by using that food in our schools.
Uh, I don't have that detail, but we can reach out to Ms. Belcher and see if there's a way that she tracks or has that information.
Yeah, I mean, we have to know what a head of lettuce costs. And so when they're able to donate heads of lettuce, um, and, you know, big picture and not like in the weeds, but just understanding so we can talk to donors and say, you know, this program is saving the district X amount of money a year and we have a wonderful agriculture, uh, community. And so going out and having those conversations would give us opportunity to say continuing to support these kinds of programs saves the district money in the long run. Just a thought.
Go back one, sorry. Um, this twenty thousand dollars is the same. This is for the Camp Kiwanis food reimbursement, the portion of that. And that only happens once a year. So if you guys are curious of why there's nothing there, it's because it's done at the very end of the fiscal year. So that variance, don't be alarmed. Um, there is a handout for slide thirty-two. It'll list every position that's funded in the food service account. They do have a small increase there. Um, I think it's mostly in food service workers, about ten new food service workers.
Which new food workers because we have two new schools?
Yes. For the purchase service category, um, the food service has stayed pretty consistent. There's not a lot of changes there. Their energy costs have actually stayed stable from twenty-four to twenty-five, twenty-six. You will see some variances in material and supplies in the food category. Um, I know Ms. Belcher has come many a times talking about their expanded food choices and offering different meals and that cost will be reflected in the food category, object fifty-seven hundred there. So I had mentioned at the beginning that, um, food service did have some funds in reserve that they'd been using. There, um, so you'll see a increase here in like furnitures and remodeling projects. So they're working on doing some generator and freezer projects with some of their excess funds. And this is the amount that they have sitting in fund balance that's over the three-month reserve that's required to sit there. There is also not a large difference here, um, in the other expenses. But just to highlight the miscellaneous expense there, that is where the indirect cost is recorded. We are allowed to charge this grant just like the other federal grants and indirect costs. So I know it says miscellaneous expense and that is dictated by the Department of Education red book. But that is the account where the indirect cost is recorded. So if there's no questions on food service, we can move on to the special revenue other. And this is where all the grants are. Oh, sorry, food service fund balance, I almost skipped it. So we're estimating at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six that food service will have a fund balance of fifteen point one million dollars. That will put them in having excess funds for that year. Excess funds are anything over three months of operating expenses. So they are required to provide a plan to the state to spend down all those excess funds. And that's where projects such as the freezers and the generator projects, how they're getting the funds to spend that. And now we'll move on to the grants. So special revenue fund, this has been a topic of this year. Um, we are currently estimating fifty-six point eight million dollars in the special revenue fund. That is significantly less than last year. About fifty-one point nine million dollars is federal revenue. Um, that's ninety-one percent of this budget. We do have some small local grants, um, four point seven million dollars. And then a small amount from state. Um, salaries and benefits is sixty-eight percent of this budget. So we do have a large amount of federal revenue we receive and then staff that are supported on those grants. After salaries and benefits, the next item is material and supplies. And this is where we're really getting all those extra supportive materials for the classrooms and students. I've been looking forward to this slide for three years um, because this will really show you guys the ESR funding cliff that I feel like we've been talking about. Um, you can see in twenty twenty-one or prior to twenty twenty-one, our grant funds remained pretty consistent around thirty to thirty-five million dollars. And then starting with the ESR funds in twenty twenty-one, that steep climb up to a peak of a hundred and twenty-three million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four. We do see a huge decrease down to seventy million for twenty-four, twenty-five. And we're estimating that for twenty-five, twenty-six, that number will taper back off down at the thirty, thirty-five million dollar number. Slide forty-three has another list of all the grants that are included in the tentative budget. I will let you guys read through that, but I will highlight the large grants. Twenty-two million dollars is Title One Basic and that is for low-income schools. IDEA B, IDEA Part B is fifteen point nine million dollars. And this is for, um, students with disabilities and provides supports for them. We also have Title Two that provides supports to the, um, providing teachers, principals, and other school leaders with supports they need to improve student learning. Good? Okay. Now we'll look at the revenue in more detail. All through, um, capital or SRF, you guys are going to see a decrease. Um, this is because of the ESR funds. And I will probably repeat myself on every slide that all the decreases are due to the ESR funds ending. So you see about a twenty million dollar decrease in federal through state, um, there. And an overall decrease of twenty-three million in this, in the SRF fund. And again, here, the federal through state, twenty-three point six million in, um, object code thirty-two seventy-one. And that is where the ESR funds were recorded prior. Other than that, the grants were pretty, um, consistent. There weren't any significant changes in state and local revenue. So unless you guys have questions, I'll move over to expenditures. Okay, so you guys also have a handout for slide forty-seven and it'll show you the positions that are supported in this, um, fund. There was a decrease over prior year of about five point four million dollars. Um, we're, we planned well and had moved many of the people out of the ESR grants prior to the partial year that ended in September of twenty twenty-four. So you aren't going to see a huge cliff in salaries and benefits, but you will see it in some materials and supplies and also some, um, technology rentals. Um, so thirty-six hundred, I would like to highlight that is where we pay for subscription costs for some learning programs. And we were purchasing quite a few off of the ESR grants. So that big decrease there, you will notice that is from the ending of ESR funding. Not any huge changes in energy service. Materials and supplies has increased. I know we've been trying to focus the grants on spending that supplemental money really on items instead of positions. There was a decrease in the capital outlay object codes of about five million dollars, again, due to ESR. We did, um, off of the ESR three grant, do several capital projects related to cover play, cover dining and some HVAC upgrades. And the biggest decrease in the other expenses is going to be in the object seventy-nine hundred miscellaneous expense. And that is the indirect cost related to the ESR grants. So a big decrease there. So that's all for the special revenue, the grants, unless you guys have questions on those.
Any questions?
Okay. We'll move on to internal service fund. And this is where both the property, workers' comp and casualty insurance as well as the health insurance are recorded. So both of those combined, our estimated revenue is ninety-eight point six million dollars. Um, the local portion of that is the collections from employees and the board portion to pay for that cost as well as the amount that we, um, charge for the property casualty insurance. The other expense category, fifty-eight point eight million dollars. This is the actual cost of the, the insurance premiums or claims expense. There is a handout for this slide that'll show you what positions are funded in the, um, in the internal service fund. I think it's, there's four total. Um, a risk, few benefit specialists. There is a small amount for purchase service to pay for, um, actuary costs and the people that manage the health insurance. This slide will look just at the property casualty and workers' comp insurance. This portion of the fund is a lot smaller, about ten point five million dollars. Again, the, the largest piece of this is expenses that are already recorded in general fund of about six million dollars. And then the biggest cost here is the purchase service of three point seven, which is the actual cost of the insurance premium. Slide fifty-six will show you the estimated ending fund balance including the, um, estimated claims liability that we have outstanding. So at the end of the year, we still have claims out there that we know that aren't settled. So we do take that into account when we do the estimated ending fund balance here of four point seven million dollars. We'll move on to the health insurance fund. Um, the total projected revenue is eighty-eight million dollars. Sixty-two point eight million of this is, um, both the board and employee portion for the health insurance cost. And that will include vision, dental, full comprehensive benefit. Again, the largest portion here is going to be the actual claims expense of fifty-six point nine million dollars. Again, this slide will show you the estimated ending fund balance including, um, health insurance claims that we have not paid out at the end of the year. So a twenty point nine million dollars estimated ending fund balance for twenty-five, twenty-six. So that is all I have. I will turn it back over to Dr. Brewer. I don't think Teresa is coming back up.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Brewer? Any closing comments on that?
I have three. I want to make sure I, we know exactly what we're bringing back based on some of your questions. Um, you want the impact fees broken down by district. Um, and you want in future for the next, when we bring the five-year plan back, Dr. James requested a detailed, um, plan for the five-year plan in October. So the consensus of the board, okay? And, um, you would like a farm-to-school savings to see. We know exactly how much we are giving to the schools from the garden. So you just want to see what that amount looks like in terms of savings.
And I'll speak to me, I don't need that to be another work session. All of those things to me are an email, but certainly if it's the pleasure of the board to me, that's fine. But I don't need a work session just to address those three items.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think, I would just like to know, so an email is sufficient for me.
Okay, thank you. We'll provide, oh, Ms. Thor.
The only thing that came to my mind about the farm to school-
The only thing that came to my mind about the farm-to-school is that excess, you know, you just, it's waste not, want not, and it also, I think, a full circle with the Public Health Foundation and community service, that if we have extra fresh food, you know, that we don't need, you know, could it go to interfaith or, you know, something like that? Because that's an important lesson for kids to know, too, you know? When, when you have plenty, share it.
We'll provide that information to you by email.
Great. Anything else?
Dr. Brewer, if, if I could just add a couple of things to that. The farm-to-school program is expanding exponentially, but what, when we get, I call it inventory in, it is given a value, so we can provide that to you, but it's recorded as inventory.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I just think, from a fundraising perspective, it could be really cool to say, you know, we're saving the district this much money by this program, your donation directly to this program could help expand our efforts to continue to save the district.
It would be really neat for you to get more information, because Ms. Belcher, they're meeting farmers, and these are things that you aren't, don't know about. I mean, she gets an opportunity, when we do the strategic plan, to give a little bit of information, but they have expanded involvement, not only with fans, but the farmers in our area, and other school districts are coming to her to find out, you know, how you're doing this, so, I mean, that's something we could also ask her to provide to, to you, an update on, on how all that's going as well. So if we can provide all this information via email, if you're okay with that, we will do that versus another PowerPoint.
Ms. Boston Ellis, I do have a question. I don't know, I don't know how challenging this ask would be, but on slide forty-three, where, where the grant list, the list of the grants?
Yes.
Would it be possible to kind of, I don't know what to call it, I don't know what the best way to present it would be, but to see, so that the board could see what grants touch which schools or which facilities? Would there be a way to do that?
We used to provide that to the board, not only the schools, but also a summary of what they're doing, so we'll go back to our federal grants department.
I would appreciate that. I would just like, you know, how to, how, to see how this looks, you know, across the district and where these special revenues are, are going, so. All right. Thank you very much for that.
Is that something that we can email you as well?
Yes, that's fine. By me. Board, would anybody, anybody else interested? Reverend Cummings is nodding. Okay, yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys, for the presentation this morning. I would like for us to, we, since we're talking about the farm share, I think we do need like a, a presentation to present in a, in a work session to the community.
We're, we're very proud of it. I mean, I could go on and on, and, but as you know, I worked closely with the hospital district last year, and with Ms. Belcher, she's just been incredible, and so, yeah, absolutely, we can add that to a work session topic.
Well, and I, I would love them to have, have them here, because they are one of the most excited groups you run into when you're out and about in Marion County, so it would be a lot of fun to have them here and share.
Okay. We'll get with Ms. Belcher.
Okay. That sounds great. That's, I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Especially if they're a model, you know, if they're working on being a model for the state, then to me, that's definitely worthy of recognition on a board night.
I think sometimes you need to
Bring their cabbages.
Tell your own story, blow your own horn, write your own narrative, and I think if we're, we're doing well with it, we need to do, we need to tell the story, and, and our community needs to know it as well.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings.
I'd like to add, and, and it would be a great time to showcase the partnership we have with Marion County Hospital District, because of, because of their resources, we're able to keep the greenhouses up to date, and they do a lot of work with our greenhouses, which help, of course, grow the vegetables and fruits, so we're excited.
It hurts to meet some local farmers, either.
Yeah, and they have. They have been working, they're traveling all over this county, meeting individuals, and like Dr. James said, these, these farmers are willing to donate, so it would be a great time to showcase and maybe get more.
Fantastic. All right. Anything?
And I'd personally like to thank you for your questions and your attentitiveness, and taking the numbers and making it relevant to our community. Uh, we do, we don't have all the answers, but we know where to get them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Boston Ellis. Is there any public comment? Okay. Seeing done, none. Ms. Thrower, did you have something you wanted, you, you're looking tentatively at me.
Yes, just because this was to be our last presentation, unless the board feels like we needed a, an additional one, and if the consensus is we don't need an additional one, and, you know, our, our questions are gonna be answered via email, I believe this will be Ms. Boston Ellis's final
Presentation.
Budget presentation after, what, thirty-three years? So worthy of acknowledging and thanking you for
Yes, your work. Your diligent work, yes.
Y'all just embarrassed her, y'all.
Yes.
I know. She had her head down that whole time.
But we did get a really good smile out of Ms. Boston Ellis during that, yes.
She's blushing to her toes now, so.
Yes, we are very appreciative, Ms. Boston Ellis, for not only the time and the work that you put in for our presentations, but you also take time with board members like me, who sometimes need help understanding all of the intricacies of the budget, and so thank you for your personal commitment to helping us all be on the same page. We appreciate you. Okay. With that, I will move into meeting reminders. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled, oop. I did, I did public comment. I did. It was before we clapped. Yep. Thank you for the reminder. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for August twenty-first, twenty-first at nine AM. There's a school board meeting scheduled for August twenty-sixth at five-thirty PM, and with that, we'll move into board comments. Ms. Martinez Young?
Nothing, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers? All right. Thank you. Dr. Brewer?
Thank you, and I do wanna remind the board that Ms. Boston Ellis is, will attend, she still has one more board meeting on August twenty-sixth, so she, she's not quite free yet, but we, but we are so appreciative of the work that the entire finance and budgeting sides of the House, just they've worked for months, and I know we've commented on that every time they have presented, but they have done an amazing job, and yes, Ms. Conrad, making the information relevant and really breaking down each of the details has been incredibly helpful to me, and I know to the board members and to our community, so thank you for all of your work. Your entire team has been incredible. Speaking of that team, I want to publicly recognize and introduce Mr. Rob Rios-Welsh. He is our new Chief Financial Officer. He was board-approved Tuesday night in the agenda, and we're looking forward to his work. He will work closely with Ms. Boston Ellis in the next two weeks, and then, of course, take over when she officially retires at the end of August. So we welcome him, and we're looking forward to great things. I wanted to share a couple comments about athletics. We have, fall sports began on July twenty-eighth with football, girls' volleyball, swimming, bowling, golf, and cross-country, all starting their respective seasons. The fall season lasts through the month of October, with our FHSA state championships beginning the first of November. Please remember to the community, and to our employees, that all MCPS employees receive free admission to our athletic contests as long as they wear their badge, and I'm not wearing right now, but as long as they wear their badge, so they have to have that, and then they arrive at the pass gates at the athletic events, and they can re, attend the event at no charge. And my final statement was, our enrollment continues to climb, so we're excited about all of our students and families that have chosen to attend Marion County Public Schools, and we are continuing to just be excited about the school year, so thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Dr. James?
Thank you. I wanted to mention, too, I believe retirees, if they get their correct pass
Ms. Boston Ellis?
So it is a something that, it's a something Mr. Tucker started a year or two ago, but retirees can use their special pass to also come to any game for free, lifetime.
Correct. They have lifetime.
I wanted to make sure I highlighted that. I don't have a ton of comments. Mike, I have a question. The chair mentioned that we were not having a meeting in October, and I'm perplexed because I thought, referencing, I'm sorry, but I'm referencing our intergovernmental meeting?
Oh. Yes.
Because I have had hesitation regarding the firm we're using to collect data, and I was assured that we were going to have a deliverable and a lot of information given to us in October. JB Pro was gonna be leading the work, and then that was gonna essentially be the conclusion of their efforts with Marion County Public Schools, 'cause their work for that contract would be done, and so my concern is that if we are not having a meeting in October, why? Who is delaying the meeting? That's my first question, I guess. So Chair, do you have that information?
Dr. James, you know I'm not the best at multitasking up here, because I have to work so hard to listen. I'm trying to look, 'cause I, I don't remember off the top of my head the details of that, but I, I can send that. Attorney Powers, can I communicate with you when you send that out to the board, what I'm working, what I've been asked?
Does anyone from staff know why we're not meeting in October? Or is JB Pro just gonna keep working until February or March? Dr. Campbell?
The only reason that, I, I remember in our spring meeting, we discussed having another meeting. I don't know that it was ever in concrete. Obviously, the inter-local agreement says that we meet every year in the first quarter, so I, I was, whenever, I, you and I had the same look whenever we heard that, and then I went, and inter-local agreement only requires that we meet once a year, and so
Yeah, 'cause we had nothing to provide, essentially, when we met last time, so we were gonna come back and take another shot at the bat, but
Yes, so we, I don't think we have the date nailed down yet. I know Mr. Ayers sent out some information to the, the different groups about trying to nail down some dates in October for our technical working group to meet, so I'll follow back up with him and find out if we've gotten any dates solidified yet.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse.
The technical working group is not the intergovernmental meeting.
No, it is not.
Right.
Yeah, the technical working group, my understanding, is still working.
Okay, so, so this board member is confused, then, because we were paying JB Pro until some date in October, we can find the contract, so are we now just gonna keep paying them to keep working until February? Those are questions that I would like to leave with staff to clarify, because that is, that causes me pause, because I was expecting us to redeem ourselves by the fall, and if we're not going to do that, because they didn't have it together, then they just needed a little more time, well, we gave them six more months, which was gonna be October, so they could button it all up, and now we're essentially gonna go a whole year, and so that's where my heartburn lies. So those are my only comments, but that's what I'm looking for. That's all I got.
Thank you, Dr. James. Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse, for filling the gap in there as best you could. Okay, anything else, Dr. James?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Reverend Cummings? All right. Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Just following up on what Dr. James was just saying, I, yes, they needed a little bit more time, but as I distinctly recall, it was because the way both of our governmental entities track data in planning and zoning didn't talk to each other, and so that, the data was not possible to calculate as presented by the governmental bodies, so I, I believe JB Pro, the money that the school district spent is actually gonna benefit the entire community to make us all better, so that, that information will be trackable and easily shared now, so that everything will, will be tightened up and, with a nice bow there, so looking forward to more information on if we are able to meet in the fall, so that we can make sure everything's on track. Perfect. Only thing I wanted to mention was, we've mentioned on Tuesday night, grateful to Representative Judson Sapp for meeting with us on the first day of school, grateful yesterday for meeting with Senator Stan McLean. As a follow-up, for those of you in the meeting that, yesterday, I have a meeting scheduled today with the Children's Movement of Florida to talk to them about our ideas about the compulsory age change, and I have a meeting scheduled on Monday with Jessica Jana Seawitz to talk through with her a little bit. We'll be happy to submit our recommendations moving forward. Just doing research in the statute, and I, oh, excuse me, and then I also have a call next week with Representative Erica Booth, who got the House bill over the finish line, but she's been having conversations all around the state about what the holdup on the other side was, so hope, and obviously, Senator McLean is willing and able to submit language on our behalf. Just looking at what that bill language was last year that at least passed the House, still kept all of the age-six language in it, so we may actually be talking about two separate bills, because I don't wanna confuse what might get passed with chronic absenteeism and attendance, and then simult, at least have two different conversations. So we have it listed as one item, but September first is still what's all in the language, and some of it even says February first in, in here, but I don't believe we landed on anything that we wanted to change as far as what our legislative priorities are right now. I think as we move forward and the FSBA meets and we have our legislative priorities, we may want to adjust ours before we go to Tallahassee, and with that, I also did want to ask, 'cause I did not ask on Tuesday night, if, Board, if you had checked your calendars to see on dates that might work for us to go up during committee weeks, if that first week in November would be, would work for everyone, because we wanna make sure that we're able to check the committee schedules with Jessica Jana Seawitz, as well as have Ms. Martinez Young work with us on lodging if we need it. So th, those are my only questions. We kind of alluded to yesterday that we would be going up to Tallahassee, but we didn't actually land on a date, so again, I, let me find the date specifically that I had proposed. It must have been, oh.
Earlier in the week is better for me personally.
So November third, through?
Yeah, the third and fourth would be better for me. We have a work session on Thursday.
Right.
And I have another obligation on Wednesday currently.
Okay. So maybe Thursday, or, excuse me, Monday, probably, I don't know that they would start morning meetings. I would say our full day of meetings would be Tuesday, the fourth. We might be able to go up on the evening of Monday and maybe even have an afternoon meeting or two if schedule's permitting, and then our full day would be on the fourth committee schedule permitting. Does that sound? Yes, ma'am?
When will the committee schedule be released?
Great question. So as you remember with our Representative Sapp meeting, they're adjusting committee chairs
Yes, that's why I asked the question.
In the House.
We can, you know, make some placeholders, but until we
So what we know for sure is, it is a designated committee week, but committee calendars won't go out until they have people assigned to the chair of the committee, and then people assigned to the committee, since that's, all of that is gonna be fluctuating, so it, it will take, I would say, we won't have that until September, late September, something like that, and honestly, and then the agenda for committee meetings, they really don't have that information until the week before, so like, it, it's difficult for us to, to plan, other than knowing how we've done it historically, and saying that if we plan for a Monday evening and then Tuesday all-day meetings, that would give us the most opportunity to see the most people. Certainly, if you can only make the, the fourth, then that's fine as well.
Dr. Campbell, are you sure the fourth is a good day? It is election day.
It's election day.
I know most people probably early-voted and everything, if such, but is that gonna be a good day?
Isn't, it's not an election day for us. The city of Ocala is the only election happening in 2025, and it's in September. So I, I don't, I don't believe we're, I, I know it's classified as election day annually, but I, I don't believe there will be any elections, 'cause all of our representatives and senators are all on even years, just like we are, so. I'll verify with Jessica when I speak with her, if, if you'd like for me to do that. Just wanting us to get that nailed down sooner rather than later, so we, we can talk about it next week again, but that can be our tentative timeline right now, and then we can let Ms. Martinez Young, I will let her know if Jessica thinks that that's a good timeline for us, and then she can communicate with all the board to determine who would And then she can communicate with all the board to determine who would want to have the overnight stay. Okay, I think that concludes my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Campbell. Ms. Thorwood?
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a couple of things. While we are on the topic of the technical working group, is that something that you're still our representative, Chair Conrad?
I am, but if we're waiting till February, then there will be a new chair, you know, at that time, which, you know, I did share, you know, with Stephen, reminded him.
Right, I wasn't sure, since I was on it for so long as the representative for the technical working group, I wasn't sure if we were going to continue or if it was going to then go into a rotation or what. It's hard to maintain the momentum and I don't think any of us were quite satisfied with the outcome of the joint meeting and, you know, being understandable that after not communicating or collaborating for so long and then trying to change that dynamic and also having the technology working and the data's communicating with each other and all of that, those are hurdles that, you know, can be jumped. And what I don't want to lose is the momentum and the relevance of these because it's not the, just the school board that is, should be making presentations and should be providing updates on what's going on. And it's actually the county administrator, I have the interlocal agreement pulled up right now, just to make sure that I was still correct in remembering that it's the county administrator that sets the agenda, you know, with the assistance of the technical working group. And so, in my mind, every entity should be sharing information and providing updates on where development is occurring and, and what's being anticipated for increases in student population and what type of housing is being, you know, what are the trends? You know, all of those things. And so, the joint meeting of the elected officials, while it's required, if it's just happening because it's required and there isn't a completely mutual commitment to making them relevant, then they're going to continue to feel like they could have just been an email. So, my request would be that whoever is the board representative on the technical working group, if it's the consensus of the board, what I just shared and the desire of the board to have these meetings be mutually productive and informative, that we continue to just make that position known to ensure that it doesn't feel like a waste of time to anybody because it's a lot of planning for staff.
May I comment?
Please.
On your comment. And this is just my personal opinion. So, I feel that those that are participating in the technical working group are working very hard and they are working together very well. So, I will, I will just say that. The work is continuing to be done. It keeps being shared that there are challenges in getting the data to, it's all speaking the same language and that has been the hiccup. I haven't had a conversation with Stephen recently, but the work is good. It's just taking a long time. That is my personal opinion. The work that's being done is going to benefit all of us. It's just taking a long time. So, I just wanted to add that.
Sure, and that had been my experience, that the technical working group, it took a long time to get the amended and restated interlocal agreement done. And now that we have it, the technical working group continues to work, I believe, very well together. But when we're face-to-face with the public and all the entities are there, you know, that to me is, needs some more refinement because I felt like at the last one that it was considered the school board's meeting. Well, it's not. We're just one of the entities. So, I'm just putting it out there. I think it's important to have high expectations and it's to honor everyone's time and especially the public's ability to really know what's going on behind the curtain. So, that's that. The second thing I wanted to talk about, which, you know, I'm loving the idea of the innovation for workforce housing and, and the opportunities there. We know that transportation is one of our, continues to be one of our legislative priorities. I feel like a little bit that transportation got thrown under the bus the other night at our school board meeting and I don't believe that that was intentional, but I just walked away with kind of a funny feeling because it sort of depends on what schools you talk to. You know, many of my schools had the best on-time pickup and delivery that they've had in years. And yet, I drove past a broken down bus that was sitting on the side of the road and I'm sure that that impacted, you know, the on-time pickup and delivery of some other students at other schools. So, I just want to say from my seat that understanding how difficult it is to get our kids all around the district, no one is satisfied, especially transportation with two hours of late buses. We have had some years where the same buses were late, you know, throughout the school year. And so, it just got me to thinking about the innovation piece of things. And I asked Attorney Powers, I emailed this to him, I listened to a webinar this week on driving attendance and district funding, the power of alternative transportation. And to have it then sent to you guys because it's now available on demand and it was free. And I guess I was thinking about a recent visit to Atlanta where I think everybody probably has used Uber at this point and it's pretty cool. Well, there's an opportunity now in some areas with Uber to then choose Waymo, which is a driverless car. So, a driverless car rolled up, happened to be a Jaguar and they're all Jaguars. I guess, I don't even know why. But this driverless car shows up, I hop in it, go to the nearest restaurant brewery, hang out, and then it took me home. And then the next day when I went to play pickleball at Grant Park, here comes the Waymo. I mean, it's so, there are just so many opportunities to innovate and I think we've been using the big yellow buses for 100 years. And now we have the vans, you know, which is great. So, I hope we can keep thinking like that. And I hope that, you know, you guys do take a, it wasn't long, it was like an hour, the webinar, and just see what you get out of it. I did already forward it to Mr. Ostenic. And who knows? Because with this, with the meetings I've been doing with vets helping, veterans helping veterans, they call it vets helping vets now, and how they classify through their pick count every year, it's a one-time count of who's homeless compared to our McKinney-Bento kids and families, which are like over 1,500, I think. That creates a lot of strain on transportation because by law, if, say the kid was at East Marion, but now they're homeless over in Dunellen, well, we provide the ride, you know, back to East Marion to try to provide some continuity for these kids. So, you know, I'm not saying exactly, let's jump them in a Waymo, but there, it's that thought process, that we have some real old ways of doing things. And we've just struggled to try to make it better and better, you know, turn by turn, you know, adjusting routes, tiering routes. It's not like we haven't been problem solving it and it has improved. But my takeaway on this is that the innovation should never be squelched and macing pie in the sky, but I'm sure the Jetsons did too 40 years ago. And a lot of that has come to pass, which is kind of interesting. So, anyway, great ideas come from everywhere. All right, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Just want to say a quick thank you to our district staff and the board for a productive work session. I also wanted to say congratulations to Attorney Powers on his new little grandson. So, congratulations. That's very exciting. We're so happy for you. You want to give us a few details?
His name is Luca. He's a beautiful little bouncing baby boy and he's doing very, very well.
Good. Thank you for sharing with us and congratulations. Board, I also did want to share that the Kingdom of the Sun is having a concert here at MTI Saturday, September 13th at 2:00 p.m. And Sunday, September 14th at 3:00 p.m. Here at the MTI auditorium. It is free and donations accepted. And that is all I have for us today. So, if there is, oh, yes?
I didn't, didn't know if Reverend Cummings had comments, I'm sorry. Yeah, oh, okay, I'm sorry. The only other comment I want to make is I did receive notification that JB Pro is waiting for the FTE in October.
So, we have the most up-to-date information?
Most up-to-date information.
I got a problem with that. I got a problem with that because we just had that meeting and we actually got ridiculed in the meeting for not having information and we gave them that extra time and they're not going to have the information until October?
Well, that was a...
Is that what I'm hearing?
If I remember correctly, it was a sticking point and maybe this was at the technical working group meeting, but it was a sticking point for the county that they wanted the most, and please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. They wanted the most up-to-date information and so, that was their ask.
Which FTE week is the second week in October? And then my understanding was we were going to have a meeting, an intergovernmental meeting in October, following FTE week, so they would have all of their stuff done, they'd get the FTE number so that they would know exactly how many students we have. We would have our intergovernmental meeting to hopefully paint a better picture than what we painted six months ago and we were going to button this up. And so, I'm wondering why we're not buttoning. That's, that's wrong that, but I don't, we don't even...
And I'm sorry, that's all I remember and that's all the information I have, but I will, again, I'll follow up. I will get with Attorney Powers and Stephen Ayers and get some more information out to you all.
I just don't want us to have another meeting like we had a few months ago because I felt it wasn't a good meeting and it wasn't a good look on how we were made to be portrayed in this meeting. So, we need to go in there and correct.
Okay, Dr. Brewer, I'll get with you too.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Anything else for the good of the group? Okay, there being no further business, we'll adjourn this work session at 11:21. Thank you.
Thank you.